Like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one School Committee Meeting. In keeping with an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during a state of emergency. Signed into law by Governor Baker on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board members will be remote. And attendance should count towards quorum. The meeting will be broadcast live on Facebook and recorded on ECAT. This meeting is open to the public. We'll take questions via the chat feature at the bottom of your screen. Please make sure to include your full name and address. We'll do our best to answer all questions. However, we will not read questions that have already been answered. Okay, before we get going, I would just like to adjust the agenda a little bit. I would like to make a motion to move item six, which is superintendent notes. And flip it with item five, public comments, so that that would mean superintendent notes. Came just before public comment. And that would give Dr. Cabral the opportunity to address the survey prior to public comment. Do I have a second?
O'Neil, second.
And do I have a whoops, roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Duance, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, personnel changes, retirement of a kindergarten teacher at Center School, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. And I'm delighted to say that I believe she is here this evening, so. Robin Goldstein. Is currently a kindergarten teacher. She came to Easton Public Schools in nineteen ninety-six as a point eight or mostly almost a full-time. Project early teacher. Over the course of her time with EPS, she has been with various different schools. She's worked at Northeast and Grammar School, the HH Richardson School, Moreau Hall, and now Center School where she is currently. In two thousand eight, she went to the full-time position. She received her professional teaching status in nineteen ninety-nine. And she plans to retire at the end of this school year after twenty-six years in the district. As a former high school teacher for twenty years, I can tell you that we look very. Whistfully at our colleagues who teach kindergarten and very respectfully because we know. Just how difficult that can be. It's funny because I've heard that them says that about us at the high school level sometimes. But it's always been a pleasure to be in Mrs. Goldstein's classroom, not only to see her smiling face every time and her positivity. But also to see the joy in her classroom and how engaged and. Interesting her, her students' tasks and her students are in what she's doing, so. I with regret present to you her. Request that you vote on her retirement.
Okay, I do have a letter from her. Dear Dr. Cabral, School Committee and Town of Easton. I am writing to notify you that I'll be retiring from my position as a kindergarten teacher at the end of the fiscal school year. Two thousand twenty-two. I greatly appreciate the opportunities that Easton Public School has provided me. Although I will sincerely miss this position, my colleagues in this community. It is my time to move on and explore the next chapter of my life. I've had the pleasure to work with the most talented, compassionate, supportive educators. I'm grateful for the Easton Public School system. Good luck moving forward in the new school, uniting all these dedicated teachers. Sincerely, Robin J. Goldstein. Thank you. Any comments? From School Committee? Nancy?
Robin is awesome. I've known her a long time and she is one of the most dedicated kindergarten teachers as they all are, but. Robin especially. And I've always enjoyed when I went to Center School visiting with her in her classroom, so. Good luck to Robin as she retires. You're gonna love it.
All right. Caroline?
I just wanted to make a general comment about kindergarten teachers. It's been my experience over the last twenty-nine years that they are often just the most exuberant. Creative teachers that one could ever hope for. And the interesting thing to me is that they always stay so youthful looking. I think there must be some special, I don't know. Reaction biologically when you teach delightful five-year-olds and well, I guess four to six, like five, six-year-olds. Because I've always just been amazed at how young all our kindergartens or kindergarten teachers look. But I know that. Mrs. Goldstein has been very well spoken of and certainly we're going to be probably voting on this in the affirmative, but with regret.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Chrissy?
I'm sorry, I know, I know I'm not a School Committee member, but I just, I just have to say that. Every time I walk into Mrs. Goldstein's class, it's just like a breath of fresh air. And last year when we started in the hybrid model. I walked into her classroom as they were preparing for the year and she had on this shirt. It said, this is what I look like behind my mask with a picture of herself for the kids. I mean, she is always, has always been so. Child-focused and everything in her classroom revolves around the student and. You know, I'm so excited for you for retirement, but you are definitely going to be missed so much. And thank you so much for your service to the Eastern Public Schools.
Thank you. Okay. May I get a motion?
I'm sorry, can I just go right ahead, sorry? I just wanted to point out that she's here, so as soon as you vote, I just want to make sure we don't cut her off in case she would like to speak.
Okay, would you like to speak?
I had to figure out how to unmute. It's a very difficult decision for me because. Eastern and the teachers in Eastern are the most amazing people and they work tirelessly. For the children in the community and it. It, it's bittersweet for me. It's definitely bittersweet and the teachers, the assistants. Everybody is just phenomenal, so I'm gonna miss it, but. I'll be back.
Need subs, always need subs.
I just, I, I wanted to say I appreciate everybody so much and I, I thank you.
Thank you, all right. Did I miss anyone else? I'm sorry, I can't see everybody all at once. All right. May I get a motion to accept the retirement of Robin Goldstein with regrets?
So move to Luca.
Can I get a second?
O'Neil, second.
Roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Duance, yes?
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you, enjoy your retirement. Okay. COVID updates. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you, we have a very concerning issue here right now. I'm gonna ask Mrs. Pruitt to share a presentation with you. And. I am trying to prepare a report on this to send to all families. I did need to kind of halt on that to prepare something else for later in this meeting, but. We will get that out as soon as possible. This information is startling to us. We felt as though last year we. Had hit the peak in terms of not only COVID cases, but also. Close contacts. And we were able to get through the entire year with no school transmission whatsoever. We cannot say that any longer. We do have school transmission and our highest point of COVID cases last year. Were the three weeks after the winter vacation, the first three weeks of January. By last week, we had already exceeded, in fact, far exceeded what those numbers were in January last year. And so we are literally at our highest ever and expect nothing except the trend. That happened last year to continue this year, so we want to share this information in hopes that. People are aware. I know a lot of people are living through this, their children are home on quarantines or they are dealing with the test and stay protocol. Or they themselves unfortunately are ill. It's important that everybody have, we, we post this data, of course, every week on our website, but we really want to draw people's attention to it. Especially prior to the. Upcoming vacation because we just want to make sure that. People are not complacent, whether they are vaccinated or not, it's just really important to remember that. We may be vaccinated, we may have our boosters, but we also may be a carrier. And have no symptoms or very few symptoms, but pass it on to a coworker, a friend, a family member who then takes it to somebody else. Who is very immunocompromised elderly, has some other comorbidities and it can be very dangerous for them, so. We just want to remind people, we are definitely not out of the woods. In fact, we're in the worst place we've been since the pandemic started. So I, I, I don't mean to be alarming, these are the facts and we have to be aware of them, so I'm asking. Mrs. Pruitt to share our most up-to-date information with you.
Okay. Hello, everyone. So this is, this is the presentation I shared last week with some updated information. I just wanted to. Let you know that the data that was shared last week, again, that was in more of an informal session, so we made sure that. What we were sharing, so they were able to attend and, and listen to, to what our findings have been. So just basically, our current state is that we are seeing a drastic increase in cases. As Dr. Cabral stated before, we, you'll see in the graphs that we, that I'm showing below. That we are at our highest point for reported cases that we've had since the pandemic started. You know, one would think that maybe that wouldn't be the case with the increase in vaccinations, however, some of these. Variants are breaking through the vaccines while we are seeing that the, the symptoms may not be as. As, you know, debilitating. We, we still know that this is definitely affecting many of our students and families. I also just wanted to let you know that the, yesterday we met with the commissioner and. They, he stated that the mask announcement that was supposed to come this week. For the future masking has been postponed and not to expect it until the beginning of January. With the Omicron variant out now, the commissioner and his team are awaiting to see what. The, what the trends might show, but he is anticipating that masking will continue. With the increase in cases, it, I cannot even begin to tell you the increase in contact tracing. For example, at the middle school last year when we were in the hybrid model. We kept the kids, the kids did not, they stayed within their, they were on a team, but they also stayed within their class. So the whole class traveled from one class to the next. This is not the case this year, we went back to the traditional middle school model. Where kids are, while they're on this particular team, they are able to intermingle between different classes and different groups. That has drastically increased our contact tracing. And so if a child come demonstrates as positive, we are seeing, you know, anywhere between thirty. Between twenty and thirty students identified as close contacts. We are also seeing that families are receiving multiple notifications because they are being identified as close contacts for multiple kids. So, so with a, with that in play, we are receiving a little more support from the CIC and DESI, which is nice. In fact, we have. We have an onsite sampler collector starting to assist with our test and stay program. As we have many students involved in our test and stay program at the time. So we are thankful for that, but it's still not enough. Our test and stay program, I just want to say it is up and running and it is going very, you know, it is. A wonderful program. We have saved hundreds and hundreds of days in school for students due to the test and stay program. But I also want to reiterate that the test and stay program is only for students that are identified as close contacts. For an in-school function, so if they're in school identified as a close contact, if they're at a sporting event, that is. That if they're playing in a sporting event that is deemed a, a school event. They can participate in the test and stay program. If a child is identified as a close contact outside of school or involved in an, in a recreation program. That is, that might be conducted in the school, but not a school-sponsored event, they cannot participate in the test and stay program. There is some misinformation out there. I'm addressing it with the, with the program coordinators and they are adjusting the letter that they are sending at home. But this is a state mandate, it is not within our control, this is the only way we are allowed to operate. And I also want to reiterate that we have the return to place, return to school playbook that is constantly being updated. It is such a great resource and a great tool. Many questions that I receive from families, the answers are in the playbook. And while I'm happy to respond, I am linking the playbook to the, the answers. With which slide to reference so that they have that accessible. And also our COVID nineteen dashboard is updated every Wednesday, hopefully by five o'clock. If not by five, definitely by six, so, but most days, in, in fact, yesterday, I think it was updated by three thirty. Any questions about our current state before I move on? Okay, so are, this is just a copy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't see everybody.
That's okay, I just have a quick question. With the test and stay, that's only for unvaccinated, the unvaccinated kids, right? So I, I know that's a state mandate as well, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
So with these new variants that seem to be. People who are vaccinated are, are catching COVID even because of these new variants. It, it, has there been any discussion with DESI about allowing vaccinated people to participate in test and stays? Mainly so that you can be, they can be identified if they have COVID and kind of try to stop the spread in that way?
Yes, they, DESI has shared that they are relooking at that, but at this time, they are sticking with the unvaccinated. Population to participate in the test and stay, but they are relooking at that. In fact, we have a webinar coming up next week and I'm sure that will be addressed during that webinar about if there will be. Any opportunities to change that. We had a call this, that would send, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
That's okay, no, we had a call this week and it was asked again of him. And they, that's all that they said, they were looking at it, it's a supply issue as well. We, we, we get our supply from DESI if we use it without their authorization for vaccinated people, we won't have enough. For the unvaccinated and so we are staying on them, we are, we feel the same way, we understand. The, the other problem, however, is that we are very much at capacity right now with the people that are able to do the testing, so. Without any physical help, human resource help from the state. It's going to be hard to also include the vaccinated people, so. It's, you know, we're trying to run what in essence is a clinic here in our building with all of the other things that are going on right now. And it's, it's very, very taxing on the staff we have. So all of those things play into it, I, I know. Sometimes it seems like such an easy, simple thing to do, but there are so many things behind the scenes that make it difficult or impossible. In this case, it's that we don't have the tests, we don't have the people and we don't have the permission just, just yet, but we're still staying on it.
So here is the current dashboard, as you can see, this has been updated from last week. Just to kind of see, you can, our, our numbers at the middle school are, are. Trending upwards and I've been in contact with the middle school multiple times a day. The nursing, the nurses that are there are fantastic and are trying to plug through. And the contact tracing that's occurring, you know, Mr. Carroll is our lone administrator there right now. So he's got a ton on his plate and is, and is doing this contact tracing. Guidance has been wonderful in supporting him during this time, but it has been a tremendous, tremendous effort. So our year-to-date, you can see that we are, you know, just drastically going up. We, while, you know, I was saying to people, we were hovering around four positive cases, four to five positive cases a week. Now it is just, it's just going upward. And this is a, this is a accumulation between staff and students data. This isn't just students, this is both our staff and students. And this is what is, is. Then when you tease the data out, you can see that our students are, do have the higher amount. I mean, granted, there are more students in our district than staff, so that would make sense. But that, but we see that our students, it's still an increase on both, both lines. And then I also broke it down per grade level so that you could see, the blue is our pre-K to two. They have, they do tend to have less numbers that are positive. But again, the trend is going up. Our three to five is the red line and they, they're going down for some reason, let's hope and keep it that way. Could be a result of the more vaccinations as well that have been occurring. And our yellow line is, has spiked and our green line is our, sorry, our yellow line is six through eight and our green line is nine through twelve. And then when we look to year-to-date, again, you know, this is just a glimpse of, of what, what we are year-to-date. But then what struck me and what struck Dr. Cabral, which really prompted this presentation. Is I, I said, I wonder if we compared last year and this year. Where were we last year? Because we, I do remember that we had a spike in cases, but. It wasn't now. And this is what was extremely concerning and what prompted this presentation. Was because we are well above the rate. And when you look, you can see this is the trajectory of where we're heading. This is where we are right now and, and we have the spike coming. And I, I wanted to put that line in there so you could see, the spike hasn't even happened yet and we are anticipating. You know, it's all over the news right now with the Omicron variant, but also regardless of the Omicron variant. We have our holidays coming up, people will be gathering and people will be getting together more often. I also know that, and I know for myself, you know, precautions are, people aren't as careful as they used to be. And, and it's definitely shown, you can see in the stores, people don't have masks on. You can see out in public, there's more gatherings where people aren't as cautious as they used to be. Because people are fed up and I get it. But we're seeing a spike and we're seeing more and more kids miss school and more staff being out. We have a huge substitute shortage, which we are very concerned about. So when we think about what can we do with this, you know, again, utilize safety precautions. I know it's not something that everybody wants to hear. My whole family, we are reinstating the use of masks everywhere we go. It's also the cell, you know, if you could self-screen daily, self-screen your child, well, you wouldn't self-screen, screen your child. And just, you know, review, review to see if they have any symptoms. A lot of our symptoms are being masked with. With people thinking that they just have colds or that they have the flu because the flu is going around. But in, in fact, it is turning out to be COVID. And if your child does have symptoms to school, please do, or do have symptoms, please do not send them to school unless they have a negative PCR. We really, e- even if you test them at home, sometimes those tests are inaccurate. And we really need to see that there is a negative PCR. I will tell you, Massa Soyit is an easy testing site to go to. Their hours of operation are on the Massa Soyit page, not to put a plugin, but it is free and you can go at any time. And you know, the test and stay program, if you have not signed your child up for it. Even if your child is vaccinated, I would still personally suggest you sign them up just in case they do switch over, like, like. Ms. Wiseman had said, you know, or, or asked about, if they do switch over and they allow us to test. Vaccinated students, the form will already be submitted and already, will already be ready to go. And then also reference the return to school playbook, the return to school playbook is crucial, it has all the information that you need in there. And then I also beg and ask that you communicate, that you communicate with our nursing staff. Our nurses have gone above and beyond every day since this pandemic has started. They've gone above and beyond before that, but even more so now. They are, they, they have your child's best interests always at the center of what they do. So please inform them if your child was identified as a close contact outside of school, please let them know. Please just keep communicating with them so that they have the most accurate information. And also keep your eyes out for the clinics, the Eastern, the Town of Eastern is setting up testing clinics, vaccine clinics and booster clinics. The booster is now available for children sixteen and older and hopefully will be. Available for children twelve and up soon is what I'm seeing on the news. So keep that, keep that in mind, and then lastly. This is a tough time for all of us and I just ask that everyone be kind. This is, our kids are watching us, they're watching how we act. And we are doing the best that we can and I beg that you continue to treat our professionals. In that nature because they have, they're going home to their families, they're going home after protecting our children. They're going home to their own families and it's trying and exhausting work. And I just, I just beg the public, everyone, to please be kind because it has been exhausting and very trying on our staff. So that's all I have for today. Does anyone have any questions?
Any School Committee have questions? Jen?
I don't have any questions because, you know, we, we had run through this last week, so we got a preview of this. I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to put this together. It's very compelling information and I, I hope, I know we have some, some folks watching today and hopefully they, they've. Been able to, you know, receive the messaging and we'll spread the word and, and we'll see, you know, hopefully some, a turnaround. Soon. But thank you so much for putting that all together, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chrissy.
Thanks.
Okay. Next item, discussion, impossible vote to change January sixth School Committee Meeting. Dr. Cabral, did you want to address that?
Sure, we have been asked to engage with the Lions Club for an honor that they are. Bestowing on the Eastern School Department for the handling of the COVID crisis, of course, which is ongoing. And that meeting is going to take place in conflict with the School Committee Meeting and so. That is why we are looking to reschedule this so that we certainly don't miss. The opportunity to plan appropriately with the Lions Club and also to have the School Committee posted in a timely manner.
Okay, so currently, the meeting is January sixth. So my initial thought was possibly. January thirteenth. Or something that week or later, well, we have on the twenty-seventh. But also to give enough time for maybe Chrissy to have updated. COVID numbers from after vacation. But I don't know, I know there's a lot of other committees and subcommittees, but I don't know what people's commitments are. Does anyone have a yes to no to that date?
I could do the thirteenth.
The thirteenth or the twentieth works for me.
I can do the thirteenth.
Yeah, I think the thirteenth would be better, just in terms of getting the latest information about, you know, what's happening with cases, COVID cases.
Okay, does that work for you, Chrissy? Does that give you? Okay, all right, so we're gonna say the thirteenth at five o'clock? All right. All right, thank you, that was easy. Okay, Superintendent Notes.
Do we need to vote on that?
Oh, do we?
It's listed on the agenda as a discussion and possible vote.
I guess it can hurt. So can I get a motion to change the January sixth? School Committee Meeting to January thirteenth at five o'clock?
Wiseman, so moved.
Our second?
All right, roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Duance, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes. Star, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, now Superintendent.
Thank you. So I've been asked to provide information about our youth risk behavior survey and I'm happy to do so. The youth risk behavior surge, survey began. Originally, the CDC put together questions.
Originally, the CDC put together questions in nineteen ninety one. And Massachusetts began in nineteen ninety three with a joint effort between. The Department of Education and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. We began this process in two thousand fifteen, far beyond. Any of the start dates of our peers. When I became superintendent, it was surprising how many places did this. I have had it in in former districts, it wasn't in Easton. We actually started it when Andrew Keo was here as superintendent, he also had had the same experience in the districts that he was in. And so um. We put together a team of very qualified professionals in our district. Our Director of Student Services, our um physical education, health and wellness. Staff, uh our Department Chair of PE Health and Wellness. Our school nurses uh and clinical staff and reviewed the questions that are provided by. Both Desi and CDC. It was important to us to stay as close to the questions as possible, particularly CDC because. We wanted to be able to compare our data. We wanted to have a norm reference. And in order to do that, there are very specific um ways you can't, for example. Change the wording of a question if you want to compare it to a national or Massachusetts reference. You uh there are lots of metrics involved, certainly, this is a a psychometric activity. And uh the team worked really hard ever since two thousand and fifteen to make sure that this was done. In a way that served Easton best. Because there are some national things, for example, that don't necessarily apply. Questions that um we would delete, for example. There's a question, of course, I'm paraphrasing, but there's a question about violence in their community if they had been involved with. You know, if they had witnessed gunshots in their community, in their neighborhood, for example. So there's some things that we just, it started, it's about a hundred questions and so ours is um obviously a lot shorter. We also wanted to make it a reasonable amount of time for students to take it. And then there were some that were added and they were added because of the data that we had. In the Eastern Public Schools, we realized we might not always be able to get the norm reference comparison for the state and for Massachusetts. But we felt like they were really important. One example was the question about vaping. We actually had that question on our survey before pretty much anybody else. It uh before the state did even. And we were able to get a lot of data from that, again, it's because of the keen observations of our counseling staff, our therapeutic staff, our administrators. Our our school nurses who are seeing that students were engaging in this behavior. And unfortunately, they were engaging in this behavior a lot earlier than we thought they were and a lot earlier than the state thought that they were. It has, it it has made us able uh to qualify for grants. To be able to bring funding to create educational programs, cessation programs, proactive programs. That's just one example. We also uh didn't have longitudinal data. That's another reason you might delete or add questions, for example, if you see something trending down. Cycle after cycle or trending up, cycle after cycle, that would indicate that that question needs to stay. Or if you're implementing a new program to see if we can determine the success. Or um lack of success of a particular program. This started in Easton as a paper test. We have scarce resources and so we were unable to afford it. What we did was uh we worked in collaboration with the Eastern Wings of Hope who. Very generously provided the funding for this, uh because you have to pay for the Scantrons that scan every. Paper copy. We also have a data analyst that works using very research based. Analytic analytic statistical procedures for reporting. And we make sure that um they also make use of the Massachusetts and national data that. Sizes up to questions that we have, so we can use it for comparisons. The consultant that we use, the data analyst actually is working through the YMCA, some people have. Commented that they saw the YMCA was YMCA was on here. This is not a questionnaire from the YMCA, as I said, it comes from Massachusetts and CDC questions. But that's where our data analyst works through the YMCA. When we started this process, it was a big process, we had a lot of public conversation. It was at posted and recording school committee meetings, uh we had input from a lot of people. And like I said, we were really behind all of our peers and they were finding. This data to be very important in leading how they were. Creating programs, buying curriculum, securing resources. How they were preparing professional development for their staff so that if students were to come to them with questions, they could provide. Those students' parents with resources to be able to answer them. And we increasingly are getting requests specifically from parents about these topics. They're finding out at home, their students are asking them about these things, they're finding either evidence on social media or unfortunately. In a reactive way, they're they're um encountering situations and you know the. The public mental health industry is in itself in a crisis right now. We have critical students and not just Easton, this is statewide, in fact, it's nationwide. And we are having a very difficult time getting services for those students. Parents are facing that as well and so they're reaching out to. Clinical therapists, they're reaching out to doctors' offices, they're reaching out through their insurance and they're having a very difficult time finding resources. We find that we are put in a position to try to connect them with as many resources, resources as possible. And through our ability to secure grants and other means of funding. Were able to get them services that otherwise they may not be able to afford. The way the survey is done and has been done over four cycles now. Parents are notified via either a newsletter or an email with a letter. The letter is um a full page long and it outlines exactly. It outlines what is taking place, why it's taking place, that it's a national survey. It says that there is a copy available for preview for parents if they wish to see it. And it also states that the questions are going to be about personal safety, violence, alcohol, tobacco and other drug use. Sexual behavior, bullying, nutrition and fitness and leisure activities. I can speak specifically to the middle school, Mr. Carroll did put this in his newsletter, he felt it got more. Readership than other forms of communication. He did include the letter, the letter has an opt out. When people use an opt out, it is simply. A very common way of doing it when you have a lot of people involved. We don't have um. We don't have um. The capacity, we don't have the resources uh to. Do it in another way, so. We were able to get rid of the cost incurred with the Scantron. By uh doing it on the Chromebook. Now, the Chromebooks are completely anonymous, um I know that for a fact because. After reading the data on our, the first time that we did it with the computers. I was very concerned about even items with small numbers of percentages for risks. One thing that is extremely concerning to me is um the number of students who are depressed and have suicidal ideation. To me, that is an immediate contact. And so I worked very hard to see if there was a way we could identify which students said. That they had identified suicidal ideation, that they had a a plan. And that they even um had attempted it and it was impossible for us to determine who they were. So I'm just gonna be upfront that I did try to do that, even though we say it's an anonymous survey. Because I was very concerned about students that may be in that situation. We were not able to determine who they were. The survey is set up so that it is anonymous and people know how to do that. People smarter than I know how to make it anonymous and so uh it is. There's nothing we could do to um. Determine who uh had answered a certain way. So what do we do? That's what we use to direct our education, to make sure kids are aware of resources. We have a who's on your side or who's on your team. Information that we share with our secondary students and we made sure to put resources for uh suicide prevention. And uh it's, yes, it is of course disconcerting to to know that students at that age. Have self-reported such things and not just on a survey. They have also talked to staff about that as well. And we also made sure that we conducted them in classrooms. So that the desks were separated as opposed to a computer lab where they're really up close to each other and it could be uh more private. And also with one of their teachers, this wasn't done just in health classes, this was done across the building so that students would be. In a classroom with a teacher that they know and felt comfortable with. This was again put in the newsletter, the letter was attached to it. Mr. Carroll then put a reminder in the December newsletter. I absolutely have talked to Mr. Carroll about communication. He. I have to say, you know, we've been doing this over several years. We're so aware of it because we do it and we then present at the school committee. In a very, uh you know, posted and very public meeting, we use the data for different. Sources that we send home to parents and for our staff. Wings of Hope has made billboards with some of the data from it, so to us, we feel as though people are aware of it. I understand parents are busy and may have missed the notices. We also made sure to let people know that for their convenience, it was available at parent conferences if they wanted to read it at that time. We really tried to make it available to people, we hear the feedback that it needs to be. More vocal and more obvious and we will do that and we appreciate feedback. Especially when it's feedback and it's not um an attack. We are perfectly capable and so happy to get feedback from people, we want to be better, we want to be better for your kids. You know, to suggest that anyone in the district had malintent, I just would ask you to reconsider that. There, the only people that work here are people who have quite literally dedicated their entire education and their lives. And their livelihood to serving your kids. They love your kids, we love your kids and we certainly are not out to try to do anything to harm them. We can certainly talk about the communication, this will not come up for another two years. We have a year to talk about how it will be communicated. And as I said, we're very happy to take feedback and work on this, we can do this through conversations and civil discourse. What isn't helpful is when um as Chrissy said before, our our staff are literally attacked. And. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. So the parents are notified, it was also in the school calendar and it was available at at conferences. Most tests and surveys are opt out, as I said, because we just don't have the resources to collect them from every single student. Reports done. And every cycle, as I said, not only are they. Thoroughly reported out at school committee meetings, but they've been posted on our website as well. The validity and right reliability of such surveys has also been fully vetted, again, it's not just happening in Easton, this is, these are nationally. Reviewed, normed and um. And. Suggestions are often made um on how to make them better, so the beginning of each of our reports actually has that information, so. I have been trying to put together information for parents. I do apologize to anyone that has written us an email and we haven't answered it, this is very, this is, this just happened. And as you can see, we're we're trying to put together COVID information for people. In addition to our regular daily business and and crises intervention and education and. And everything else and um I simply asked for a short amount of time to put together the information to send. Because um I realized that people, some people weren't aware that we had been doing it since two thousand and fifteen. And I wanted to get that information together, so that will be coming soon with many links and resources for people to look at. When students were given the survey, they were instructed that if they were unsure about something. If they didn't know what it meant or if it made them uncomfortable in any way, to skip it. And I know that there are um contrary perhaps stories out there. However, I have talked to those specific proctors and um they actually are trainers. And have trained others to handle it that way as well. And so any student, I I don't want anyone to think that things were explained or described to students. They were, they were told to skip the question and that is useful data in and of itself and so uh we encourage that.
Can I add one thing while you're looking, Dr. Cabral?
Of course.
I just wanted to share also that this survey is conducted every two years. It's not done every year and we, the last time we did it in two thousand and nineteen. We were about to present the findings and COVID hit.
Yeah.
So that's, that's really important information.
Right, we present this every year in April and um. You know, the school shut down in March, so um the report is prepared and we have it and we provided it to the school committee and it is public record, but. We weren't having any meetings at that time, so unfortunately that um did interfere. But we do have the data which is very useful because it's longitudinal and now can show us trends. So there, I understand that there were uh concerns particularly about questions on sexual activity. There were four questions on sexual activity and two sub questions on on another earlier question. So it it is. Disconcerting as a parent and as an educator to say this, but this is factual information. The oral sex question was intentionally left on the survey. Because we did in fact have uh incidences uh of oral sex at the middle school. We had cases of chlamydia. We had students who were sharing that oral sex is not really sex. And that was concerning, uh and also there were uh instances of actual oral sex that were reported. We are uh fortunate in the sense that we have very qualified clinicians. Mental health licensed clinicians, psychologists, certified guidance counselors. Licensed registered nurses at our schools. These are the professionals that someone would call consult outside of a school. And they're very well qualified to share with parents concerns. That students bring to them. As I said earlier, however, students uh are are not the only ones asking our. Very scarce staff uh for assistance, parents are reaching out and asking for information. They are reporting things that are happening, these are not things that all happen in school, of course. The parents are calling, asking for help for the reasons stated prior. With. How to have these conversations with their children. How to help a child who's either been a victim of something or been participating in something. I do wanna note um that. Because of that and because of those instances, we don't then teach what oral sex is. we don't then teach what oral sex is in the middle school. That is not our place. We're simply trying to assess the information to know what we're dealing with. And then we provide resources and information to parents, certainly parents involved. And um, the education we provide to students is more about um, risk avoidance, about refusal skills, about trusted adults that they can report things to. So I, I don't want to people to jump to the um, to the conjecture that because we ask those questions, we're teaching those things. We do not, we're, we're not trying to overstep bounds here, but we also need to know what we're dealing with. And a lot of times, the information that is on the high school survey and the data we receive there also informs what we do at the middle school. We're not looking to be purely reactive and help kids when something very disturbing or worse traumatic has happened to them. If something is happening in ninth or tenth grade, the time to assess first of all, if it's going any younger than that, that would be seventh and eighth grade. And certainly to give proactive skills to students would be seventh and eighth grade. So we're, we're just endeavoring to be proactive versus reactive on issues that we are seeing in our own school. We're not just taking questions and throwing it on there. Every single question was reviewed by the team and consciously added or not. Like I said, we have a year to talk about what's happening in the schools, our most recent data. We now have four cycles, so we do have some longitudinal data to see what trends are going up and what are going down. And um, we absolutely would welcome input from parents um, at that point. And uh, before the next um, installation of the survey. As I said, we don't, we don't shy away from participation and we don't shy away from giving information. We, we simply ask for time to get it to people. It's not always best for us to, to do things individually because we just don't have the time to do that. We wanna make sure that the information is not partial or incomplete. We wanna make sure that we're providing all of it at once. So the things I'm talking about this evening are the things that I'm trying to put together in writing to send to every family.
I wanna clarify one point, um, Dr. Cabral mentioned about the um, the incidents with the middle school students, the oral sex incidents, they are not happening at the middle school. We are simply hearing that they're happening amongst our middle school students, so I just wanna make sure that's very clear.
Uh, I also wanted to point out that Massachusetts does require um, just under two hundred schools a year to participate in their survey. We're not one of those schools. We never claimed to be. Uh, however, we and all of our colleagues participate in this every other year because, as I said, the data informs our decision-making. Those surveys that go to the state are for the state norming. That's how we compare ourselves to the state. Those are the surveys that they use to come up with that information. CDC does the same thing on the national level. So that's how we know where we are uh, in terms of comparability with other others in the state and, and the country. And why is that important? We're certainly not trying to compete. Uh, that's important because if it's strictly uh, uh, if, if it's uh, more of a national or state issue, we can tap into some national state resources or work together with colleagues to try to problem solve and again, think ahead on resources that we can provide to help students understand and help parents have the resources to have conversations with their students. Um, if these things are happening in schools, and I'm telling you they are in Easton and everywhere, frankly, um, we don't want those students to be the ones educating other students. We don't want social media personalities to be the ones educating other students. We also don't wanna be the ones educating young students. We encourage parents to do that. Um, we're just getting the data to help inform parents of what is taking place in our schools. Certainly, we have um, anecdotal information and we have our own data in our schools, but a lot of that is private and difficult to share. Um, this makes it much more anonymous and, and easier to share and it lines up frankly, with what we're seeing being reported, which is why we know that it is um, very reliable data. The reason, so another great question I received was why isn't there a dropdown menu? Why does it seem like the language says, for example, um, at what age did you begin participating in sexual intercourse? I know that's not the exact wording, but it's very close. Um, the first choice is I have never participated in sexual intercourse. The reason, and that used to be a dropdown. I did speak to the committee, the reason they decided on a, a bunch, several of those questions to um, delete that as a dropdown was because they were first of all, they wanted the whole survey to be done in a reasonable amount of time, but also you know, they're very focused on anonymity here for our students and they didn't want students to feel comfortable. And i- if you look at the survey from the perspective of a student, if there is a student who's involved in many high-risk activities, the more dropdown questions they get as opposed to students who answer no to everything, the longer it takes them and we were very concerned it would start to identify certain students as having potentially um, more things to write about. So again, we talk all the time about intention and impact. I understand that the impact, um, we're, we're gonna discuss the impact of the wording of the question. Please understand, it certainly was not the intention. There's no, there's no sick agenda going on here. Um, that was the reason. We just wanna make sure we're keeping anan- anonymity and, and reliability as much as possible for these kids. We don't want them to be singled out in any way amongst their peers when they're doing something as sensitive as this. But again, that's, those are things we take feedback on and we can try to think of better ways uh, to do things as we move forward. That's all we want is to get better with every iteration of, of literally everything we do. Um, every time we've done this, we have had students self-report either self-injurious uh, behavior or knowledge about a friend who has had risky behavior. Uh, and it happened this time as well. I can't tell you exactly why that happens, but it does. And I'm, I'm not trying to be dramatic in any way, but I can tell you based on what I know that we have saved lives with this survey, even if we've saved one. Um, this is very important information for us. And I realize that doesn't apply to every family in every, in, in, in every situation, but I think it's important to remember that we don't have all families that operate in the same way, that have the same support systems, that even have parents at all. And um, unfortunately, we're finding that some of the riskiest behaviors are coming from the most quote-unquote traditional family networks. Um, so we can't really predict who's going to answer questions a particular way. And so um, the only way we can get this information is if we ask all students these questions. We also do it in school because our clinical staff is there. Our professionals are there. If a student is triggered, if her student has a question, if a student wants to report something and um, we wanna make sure that they are appropriately supported. The high school version is different. The team also reviews that, of course, and asks questions that relate to the high school specifically. Why can't we share the survey? Well, this is true of any standardized assessment, whether it's a survey, whether it's a test, MCAS, SATs, or other surveys. Um, it does, it, it loses the validity and reliability. That's a statistical conversation that is for another day, but that is very widely known in the field of research. Uh, even if you go and, and look for questions on tests or surveys, you will find uh, quote-unquote released questions or you'll find former tests. Uh, you can find the two thousand nineteen version of the health survey. But no one who does this kind of work releases the most immediate test. Now, I realize that a copy has been shared on social media. I, I have contacted our data analyst to see if now our data is um, is, is not able to be used and needs to be discarded. Uh, I, I don't know that yet and we will let you know, um. But that's why we do that and for no other rea- reason. We're not hiding anything, which is why we encourage people to come and read it. Um, I just ask that people not jump to conclusions or think that there are conspiracy theories. I know it seems like I keep getting back to that, but that's because this has been a very trying week for our staff. Uh, I understand that parents are busy and that parents are stressed and, and our staff is too. And they're still providing an exemplary level of service to all of your children. Um, it, it really affects not only the workflow, what we're trying to get done every day in the building, but it's also affecting morale. And I, I just ask that people consider that. You don't have to not reach out to us. We wanna hear from you. Please, I'll meet with you. I met with a parent today. She was lovely. We had a great conversation. She read the survey, asked me specific questions. Um, it, it's very difficult to wade through the noise and try to answer questions in an email when pejoratives or names are being called or um, really vulgar sentiments are, are said. We're just asking, as Chrissy said, for um, civil discourse when there are concerns. We're here. And we're ready to discuss with you at any time, any issue that is of concern. Please help us be a model for our kids and, and show them the way that even when something's emotional or upsetting, we can, we can fix it. We can work together as a team and, and get through anything. Um, if we treat each other as team members, which I truly believe we are. If anyone is interested in seeing other districts that do this kinda work, I can tell you our data analyst also works with neighboring districts uh, like Stoughton, Canton, Avon. They all do middle school surveys as well. I'm sure their questions are a little bit different because I'm sure they tailor them for their school. Um, Metro West is the one that uh, I have had the most experience with before coming to Easton. Again, the links are coming. I, I haven't had time to put it all together for people, but if anyone wants to just look up the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, you can see uh, a lot of information on there about how they've done this for uh, well, a lot longer than we have. Um, they do it every other year. They don't just do it when, when it's required by DUCY, um, for all the same reasons I said as well. And um, again, I, I know it's discouraging perhaps to hear this, but these questions are age and developmentally appropriate. They, they are. We know because our students are sharing it. The important thing, however, is to know that all students develop at different points and we're well aware of that as well. So if your child is not aware of certain questions that are being asked, they can simply skip them. If they ask you about it, it is a great opportunity for you as a parent to have that conversation. Um, I'm certainly not going to I'm certainly not gonna give advice because we have our mental health clinicians who are trained to do that and I encourage you to call them on ways to do that. But acting horrified when they ask about something or telling them that it's bad to talk about is um, is a very research-based phenomenon. It is not uh, a positive experience for children. And um, they will be hearing about this information from the students in their school that are participating in it. We would much rather have them have that conversation with their parents in any way that you see fit. That is not negative or scary for them. We have resources we wanna share with you. Please ask us for them. We're happy to direct you uh, to professional organizations outside of the district as well. If you, if you feel more comfortable with that, that's perfectly fine. Education decisions we've been able to make with this information, like I said before, risk avoidance, refusal skills, we've been able to buy some um, some resources, some curriculum that we've been able to share that are more up to date. Uh, and we were able to get grants for that because they ask for our, our level of incidents. They don't take our anecdotal information about that. Um, but our driving force, of course, is specifically to make sure that we know what's going on with our kids so that we can be there to help them. We don't want to um, be caught unaware or only helping people reactively all the time. Again, please contact us if you have feedback. We ask you to, to exercise just a bit of grace when you do that. We'll have a conversation with you. You will never be shut out. Um, we acknowledge, as I said before, that we will work on our communication of this in the future. Please read the communications that go home from the school. We try to make them as short and sweet as possible because we know everyone's time is is really taxed. We, we get that. I'm really happy to answer any questions from the school committee if you have any um, before we open up to potentially any public questions. I just wanna remind anybody that if you have a public question, please make sure that you put your name and your address. That is just simply a um, an open meeting law requirement. That is not an Easton Public School requirement. I, one more thing, I'm sorry if I can just say, I apologize. Um, I really hope that people won't opt their students out for this. Um, reason being, we've really been very enlightened about a lot of things. Um, there are some issues that, um, like I said, all, from vaping to sexual activity that um, while we may have some anecdotal information, we don't always have all of it. And um, for some reason, I don't know, I, I, this phenomenon may be in the research as well. I'll have to look for it, but um, for some reason, students um, tend to self-report after participating in a survey like this. And I would really hate to see the opportunity for that to go away. I would really hate to see for the opportunity of students to ask their own parents questions to go away. They're, they're trusting you. I think that's fantastic. Um, I have to say, you know, my stu- my children are in their twenties. I vividly remember car conversations where I really thought I was gonna drive off the road because I couldn't believe some of the things that they were sharing and I thought, oh my gosh, I'm not ready for this, but they were ready for it. And um, you know, I didn't share it in any vulgar way. I, I shared it in a way that was age-appropriate in my opinion as a parent. Um, I didn't get into all of the information that an adult would have um, based on their age. But um, there are ways that we can have these conversations um, without scaring kids and without giving them um, too much information too soon. Um, you know, it, it, there's no evidence whatsoever in decades of research that suggests that talking about something encourages a student to participate in it. None. There's no research. We've vetted that, believe me, and so has the CDC. Um, we've expended a lot of resources to make sure that that's the case. And so um, please, please have uh, some faith, not blind faith, definitely not blind faith, but please have some faith in um, the professionals that work here. We're all very highly trained. We have access to some phenomenal resources and research. Um, and we definitely put all of them into um, what we're doing. We um, wanna make sure our teachers are prepared properly. And we don't know that unless we know what our kids are doing. And like I said, it's not because we want our teachers to go into all the information with kids, but when a parent calls, we wanna be able to direct them properly. I'm sorry, now school committee questions?
School committee questions, comments? Caroline?
I was sort of hoping someone else would come at first, but I think many people know that I um, by profession, I'm a clinical social worker. I've worked in that as a clinical social worker for over forty years and that includes working with children of all ages. One of the things that I know from training and research is that as uh, Dr. Cabral alluded to, children who are not informed through a fact-based comprehensive sex education program or through or through um discussions, again, fact-based, fact-based with their parents, are actually more likely to engage in risky sexual behaviors than children who are exposed to comprehensive um, sex education. And obviously, one of the ways you provide that education is by finding out first what, what children do need to learn, what they do need to know about. Now, I'm gonna address the uh, issue of oral sex specifically. Literally decades ago, when I was working children in that, with children in that age group. Um, there was research that showed that many youngsters in that age category were engaging in oral sex. And many of them didn't even really consider this sex. They didn't they knew the difference between that and sexual intercourse and they you know, if, if questioned by their parents or by a counselor, would just say that that, that's not sex. There was a report by NPR probably about ten years ago uh, that had a lot of research about this particular issue. And I was stunned myself to hear that many fourth graders were already engaging in this kind of well, for them, it was sexual ex- um, exploration. So, you know, we can bury our heads in, in the sand. I mean, I'm a parent and heaven knows I worried about my own two children when they were that age. But I think that it's important to know that we need this information. So as Dr. Cabral said repeatedly, we can develop programs that children need for support. Uh, particularly children who may not be getting uh, sufficient information at home. Because it is difficult for parents to think of their kids, their young children, as sexual beings. But um, it, but they are. And they will experiment and as Dr. Cabral again said, the so-called education that their peers may be providing is often inaccurate and can put them at risk. So as Dr. Cabral said, I think that people need to really understand the big picture here. And uh, obviously, again, children have different levels of awareness at middle school age. But sufficient numbers of them are very well aware of certain sexual behaviors and really need support and good information. Anyway, that's my little social work-based uh, TED Talk.
Thank you, Caroline. Jen?
Thank Caroline, I'm glad you chimed in because I was interested in hearing your perspective, knowing your professional background. Um, and Dr. Cabral, I just wanna say thank you for putting together this overview. Hopefully it answered a lot of the questions that are flying around. Um, and gives people the information that they're seeking. And I know that you're working diligently on getting something in writing. Um, and just appreciate that at a very busy time, dealing with COVID and, and everything else going on, um, the attention that is being put towards this. I know it wasn't, it certainly wasn't what you planned to be spending this week on. But uh, we understand, uh, I'm just very thankful that you are able to um, dedicate your very limited resources to being responsive uh, when there is something that's caught the attention of the community and has um, has prompted a lot of um, concern and questions from the public. Um, you know, uh, myself, I have four kids. They've all taken this, some of them multiple times. Um, I absolutely support the survey and value the data that comes from it. And I think, you know, we've got two years until it's issued again and there'll be opportunity during that time to, you know, work with uh, with the professionals who advise on this, maybe take some of this feedback and and maybe, you know, work on some of the wording and the communication to just address some of the concerns that have come up. So I'm, I'm confident that um, at the appropriate time, those uh, those concerns will be addressed. Thank you.
Jackie?
Um, thank you all for your comments. Um, so I remember looking at this data this past cycle and the cycle before and just being completely shocked at how young some of these behaviors began. I I was definitely somebody with my head in the sand. Um, and I'd really prefer to stay that way. But um, you know, I have a child in middle school now and um, when I look at that data um, from the middle school, it's um, it's, it's worrisome and it's definitely prompting me to think about how I talk to my own child and what I need to talk to him about. Whereas before this survey, I, I never would have thought I would have had to have these conversations for years. So I, I, I think it's, it's hard sometimes to, as Caroline said, think of your baby as growing up um, and dealing with these issues at an age that you wouldn't think it, they would need to, but um, I think the data has been really important for us to see what's going on and to know how to how to reach out to families and to children and to how to handle some of these issues. So, thank you for all your work on this.
Anyone else? Um, I just, I have a couple of questions. So we're not, our survey is not really a norm-reference test. We're basing it on a norm-reference test. Is that a correct statement?
Uh, no, we have, each question can be norm-referenced individually. So there, it is very, very similar to, it's almost the CDC survey. There were a couple of questions that were tweaked and a lot of questions that were deleted because we felt they weren't necessary. So, for example, um if there's twenty questions on something and ten are Massachusetts questions and ten are CDC questions, or nine are Massachusetts questions, nine are CDC questions and two are EPS questions, the two EPS questions are not norm-referenced because nobody else asked that question. The rest of the questions, they're still all norm-referenced. So even though we put in two questions, all the questions that the state asked, we can compare to the state data. All the questions that CDC asked, we can compare to the national data on the same question.
But they're not really the same sample group, so they're different norms. I'm not saying they're not valid questions.
No, it's the same sample group. We do it for the same age students.
But the CDC and D E S I are gonna have different sample groups.
Right, so we can, we compare, uh, when, when, on our data, when it's the national comparison, we say that it's national. And when it's state, we say that it's state, so that people know if we're comparing ourselves to the state or the nation.
How are we handling it um, when kids don't take the as- assessment seriously and just click away?
There are um, all of that and, and again, I, I can't, I can't present everything orally tonight because there's a lot of information, but that is in the last report. Um, you have that report, the two thousand nineteen report. All of the information at the beginning of it is the data analytics. And it explains how those are taken out. So for example, if there's anything, just and we're not making up anything. This is all standard um, statistics and research on, on how these things are scaled. Um, so we take out, for example, anything that has contradictory information. So for example, if a student says, you know, have you, have you ever smoked cigarettes? No. How often? Once a week. Those are contradictory, so we don't count them. You know, if somebody says um they don't take drugs at all and then they, they check off every single drug, that's contradictory, we don't count it. So there are some things that um to a statistician and a psychometrician, obviously stand out as incongruous and we take those out.
And can you?
It's called data scrubbing and we do the data scrubbing every time we do that kind of a evaluation. It's the same way that the state and the um, government, the federal government does it as well.
Alright. I missed some of the people who were on the committee. You said Director of Student Services, the Department Chair for um, Health Services, you said?
Uh, I could get a list of name for, names for you this year. They, sometimes they are different people. It's, it's every two years. So some of the people have left from the beginning. We have new staff members that have come on, so I can tell you who the staff members were this year. I can send you a list of the committee.
Okay.
But it's made up of that staff, the health staff, the therapeutic staff, um, the counseling staff and administrations.
That was what I was looking for. Not specific names.
Okay.
Um, alright, and I think the rest of my questions are coming up, so I wanna give the public a chance to ask them as opposed to me.
Okay, can I just add one last thing before that happens? Um, I just wanna say that I want to publicly give my support to Mr. Carroll. He has um, had a very difficult week. Um, I can say that he was not communicated with in a manner that um, I think anybody would like to be communicated with. He has been the victim of um, some very aggressive verbal attacks this week and accusations and name-calling. And I just wanna say, um, he did not any of these questions. He did not institute this. He is not a lone person in this. Uh, he has no sick agenda in this. And um, I'm asking people to really consider how we communicate with one another. Um, I, I don't think that can be said enough because this has been a very distressing week for individuals in this district at a very distressing time of year. I'm sure everyone can acknowledge that. And so I just want to, to show my support for Mr. Carroll. He did exactly what um, the district decided as a whole to do. And um, he did nothing on his own. He didn't go rogue. He didn't do anything inappropriate or uncalled for. And I wanna make sure that that is crystal clear to everyone.
Anyone else before I move to public comment? Alright, Chrissy, public comment, please?
Okay, the first question is from Christie McDonough, fourteen Cedar Drive, Southeaston. Can we please reinforce basic mitigation strategies in all of the schools? Windows, doors open, air purifiers on, masks being worn appropriately by the staff and students. Can admins please do spot checks that this is occurring? Please talk to students to verify it is, it is occurring. Asking a teacher if they are doing what is said in the playbook is not enough. Yes, of course. Of course, we're doing those things. Um, and especially now, we're sharing this information. Uh, like I said, we my goal this week was to make this presentation a narrative to be able to send to staff and families. I, I did put that on hold to prepare this information for you. Um, so that is coming out to everybody. I will say, um, the staff has been great about the, the air purifiers. Windows certainly depends on the weather. In some cases, they work against the air purifier so that i- if you hear a child saying, in some cases, they're not open, there may be a very purposeful reason for that. Um, the masks, I will say, even when I'm walking through schools, I'm here and there reminding students, excuse me, can you please put your mask up? Excuse me, your mask. And they comply, of course, but that is something we could really use some help from uh, parents on. So if you could just remind your, your children, if you're going out somewhere with them that requires a mask, please make sure they're wearing it properly there as well because, you know, from, from a pedagogical perspective, students transfer those skills from environment to environment and it's really helpful if they find um, that the trusted adults throughout their life are all asking them to do it the same way. It really helps us at the school level, so. Um, thank you for the question and thank you for um, helping us with that.
Kathleen Sheehan, Harrison Avenue. The paper non-scannable version is available at no cost. How can you ensure that the students' responses are private when they are answering the surveys on their Chromebooks in the middle of class? In addition, how are responses anonymous when they are submitted on school-issued Chromebooks?
So um, the scan, yes, they can do it on paper, but then somebody has to look at six hundred ki- kinda grade six hundred things. And we don't have the capacity for that. So we need to use Scantrons. There, that's a cost. The Chromebooks not only help us to um, collect it faster and not have to go through Scantron and not have that cost, but uh, it's easier for our data analysis because all of the information, a, a lot of it is quantified for us uh, on the computer. I don't know how else to tell you that it is anonymous, um, but it is and I know that. And I, I don't know if you heard my story a little bit earlier. I would encourage you to, to go back and take a look at um, at, at this recording because um, it, it is not identifiable. Uh, the way it's set up is so that it's not identifiable. My son is a systems engineer in, in computer science. I am not. So I can't explain to you exactly why that is the case, but I did have systems engineers look at it. And they have not been able to determine anyone's identity, so. Uh, and, and frankly, other than the example I gave, we have no desire to identify students. We, we're trying to help all of our kids. I, you know, I, I'm honestly being vulnerable in saying that I did try to find out about the suicidal ideation, that I wasn't sleeping. That was very, that's very upsetting. I, I don't want one child to, to feel that way. We had many. And so um, so I did look into it and we weren't able to figure it out. So I, I know for a fact that it is not identifiable in any way. I don't know how else to explain that.
Do the students have to log in and sign onto the Chromebook? Or is it done through um, like we can go into apps, like you would do with?
They go right into the survey. They do not, we don't have them identify themselves in any way. Our systems engineers know exactly how it works and, and how we can track it and we're not tracking anything.
Yeah, there's no login or email attached to it.
No, nothing.
I didn't know if they had to log onto the Chromebook to access the link to the assessment.
But even if they do, there are ways that you can run a survey that doesn't capture what email it's coming from. It's impossible. You cannot figure out who it is.
Thank you.
Sure.
Kathleen Sheehan has a few questions here. Um, Harrison Avenue again. The CDC and D E S I both state that electronic versions may compromise privacy. And they state that if you're unable to ensure privacy, then you should not conduct the survey. Why would you move forward with this survey if you cannot guarantee privacy? Any student or teacher can simply view a student's responses by looking up at their screen.
Okay, the CDC and D E S I both state that electronic, electronic versions may compromise privacy if they're done in a computer lab. They do not say that it compromises security anywhere else. We have separated desks. We have a proctor in each room. The proctor is not reading screens. The proctor is not interested in what a specific student has to say. They just wanna get the evidence that they need to help kids and that's it. Students are not looking at each other's computers. Um, it, it is very directed in one place. We didn't have one complaint by a student that um, they felt that their anonymity was compromised by completing it in the classroom. Again, I just wanna note, very specifically, CDC and D E S I both say that it is compromised and possibly compromised if it's done in a computer lab, which is a much different environment than in a classroom.
Kathleen Sheehan asks again, uh, was this the first year that the survey was given to students on their school-issued Chromebooks?
Yes, because last year was the first issue students had school-issued Chromebooks.
But each year they are conducted on school?
Devices.
Each year that is performed on, on school devices, yes. Um, Kathleen Sheehan, if you're truly concerned about mental health, then why was the survey not conducted last year?
The survey is conducted every other year because first of all, we need time to implement certain strategies and to see if they have taken root or if they're not working well. Um, if we do it every two years, we're able to get longitudinal data that um, otherwise, we wouldn't have. But the state and the country are doing it every other year. So we have no basis of comparison if we do it on any other year except the year they're doing it. If we wanna know in any particular year that a certain behavior of risk has escalated, for example, we wanna compare that not only to the state and the country, but we wanna compare it to when the state and country took the test in the same year that we're taking the test. If we take it in the off-years, we have no one to norm-reference to. And so that's why we do it every other year along with all of our colleagues in the Commonwealth and the country.
And Kathleen Sheehan said, a comment, since this was not a D E S I, not a CDC survey, EPS could have conducted the survey whenever they pleased, i.e. off the two, two-year cycle.
Hopefully, my last answer explained why we don't do that.
Um, Tara Delamere, eight, Winnicott Way. What is being done to address school shooting threats without having a resource officer available at the school? Specifically, the TikTok threat going around the country. Have the Easton PD been notified? Will there be an increased presence at the school tomorrow? Many districts around us have been communicated, have been communicated to, about this threat. to, about this threat. Have been made aware and are issued and are assured of increased police presence? What is EPS doing to address this tomorrow as well as in the future?
Okay, so there is a TikTok challenge. TikTok is a national social media site. It has nothing to do with Easton. We have no reliable threat to Easton. With that said, I have been talking all day with my colleagues around the state. We've been sharing wording of how we're gonna do this. Some of my colleagues were able to send it out already because they didn't have to frankly, prepare this program and be in this meeting right now. So they are actually put, they put them out um, this afternoon and right now. Um, Mrs. Kavanaugh has already drafted it. Um, she sent it to me while I was here, but I'm here. I am reading it right after this meeting, and we will send out our own notice, just saying exactly what I just said, that this is a TikTok, it has nothing to do with Easton. Out of a preponderance of caution, we will have an extra police presence at the school, but we have no evidence of reliable threats at all whatsoever in Easton specifically. But again, um, these are the things that are working behind the scenes that we try to prioritize over other things. I don't want anyone to think that this survey was not important to us. I don't want anyone to think that their concerns about this survey weren't important to us. But me saying that we have other things we're trying to work on because they're very timely, um, we do. And we are trying to get that information out as quickly as we can. But we had to sideline a lot of those things this week to work on this. Um, I would have preferred um, to do this next week, for example, um, so that we could get the information out on more timely issues, but I understand that people were concerned. I'm hopeful we can, we can get to a place in the future where people feel confident that we really are here to serve their kids a- and really are here for the best interests of their kids, and they will give us the grace of a couple of days. Uh, you know, the next week even to try to get some more timely things out. Um, we hope to build um, that capacity, and we hope that you'll work with us so that we can have that kind of a relationship where people feel confident doing things like that.
Kathleen Sheehan, Harrison Avenue. Why are we able to obtain copies of both the D E S I and CDC surveys? If a copy was available previously, then why is it not available now?
Okay, um, so as I said previously, um, former tests are released. Um, we have our former tests. Um, they don't send out the twenty-twenty-one tests, or surveys, excuse me. Um, you'll see the two thousand nineteen survey posted um, for that reason. And that's the reason why we don't release ours either, because it makes their data invalid. Um, hopefully, our data will still be able to be used, but I, I will let you know once we're able to determine that.
Xena Delaney, fourteen Arthur Road. Why was the question written in such a way to imply that the child should have had oral sex by at least as early as eight years old? Every parent who read that question agreed. If you don't agree, how do you defend it?
Okay, um, so as, as I said prior, uh, and you may have joined late, and that's perfectly fine, of course. Um, those questions were not asked certainly to infer anything of that nature. We were trying to limit the number of questions that were dropdowns. That means if a question says, um, "Have you participated in oral sex?", it drops down to then ask, "How many times?" Several questions are set up that way. Unfortunately, in trying to really respect the anonymity of all children, the team looked at these questions and felt that if a student was involved in risky behavior, and they were opening up a lot of those to answer further questions, it might um, set them apart from other students in the classroom. We were trying to um, create a survey that all students could answer in approximately the same time so that that anonymity would be preserved, and no one would feel as though they were isolated in any way as being quote-unquote "the last person to finish" by several minutes because they were answering many more questions than other students. Again, this is the feedback that we ask for. We're gonna try very hard to figure out a way that we can do that better because we don't wanna infer things like that. Um, as far as the eight-years-olds, we have had that happen, so unfortunately, that's why it was there. Um, if that goes away, then we won't have that um, kind of a question anymore. But certainly, we're gonna be, we're gonna be engaging parents, and I certainly hope the people that are here and that are asking questions will be involved when we do that so that we can explain why we feel a question is necessary, and then it, get feedback from parents about it, and another, other ways that we can do it, or suggestions about how we can modify it. And we look forward to that. I'm not trying to defend anything. I'm just trying to explain why that was worded that way. Um, it was, the intent was pure, the impact was not. We apologize, and we accept your feedback, and are gonna work on it. But um, this certainly was no mal-intent there whatsoever.
Andrea Picotte, eighty-three-
I think has a question.
Yep, I, yeah, I just wanted to add on that, that the eight-years-old and younger is consistent with how the CDC words um, some of their questions as well, so just wanted to assure people that that wasn't made up out of thin air. That's, that's consistent with how some of the other surveys um, have that, have that language.
Yeah, and I, I just wanna assure people, uh, you know, if you go back to our last survey and you look at CDC's last survey, um, I mean, we don't, we, we're not making up our own survey. There are very few questions that are manipulated differently. If anything, we just delete a lot that we don't think applies to Easton. I think there's this perception that maybe we kind of have our own outlier test. We don't.
Andrea Picotte, eighty-three Short Street. In the future, will you consider being more descriptive in the opt-out survey notification email? The one we received in November? Of what will fo- what, of what will actually be asked on the survey? We received, in my opinion, a varied watered-down description. Although no, I, although I know you don't want parents to opt-out so that you can gather the most data possible, parents should be permitted to make fully-informed decisions on whether or not they want their child taking a survey of this nature.
Yes, we agree. Um, as I, I said previously, we put it in the parent newsletter. We added the full-page letter to go with it that said all of the topics that would be asked about, including sexual activity. We made the survey available to read for parents. We put it in the school calendar, and it was also, um, parents were also notified that it was available at parent conferences um, in the building to try to be more convenient for people if they wanted to come and read it. As far as why we don't give out the surveys, I, I did discuss that earlier. It's part of the validity, uh, the reliability and validity of any norm-referenced surveys or tests. And um, that is the standard in the industry. That's why you'll see two thousand nineteen versions of the test posted online, but not twenty twenty-one, because it invalidates the, the data of the person um, collecting the data.
And the opt-out letter um, is, we use with, um, we use from uh, uh, models of other districts, so we don't create it ourselves.
No, I, I'm not aware of any district that doesn't use opt-out. I'm not aware of any. There may be one. Um, everybody uses opt-out. We don't have the manpower to collect them from every single student. Um, but again, we are asking for feedback. We are asking for people to come and share with us. Um, we have a whole year to talk about this, um, how we communicate this to parents. We're looking for that information, and so we appreciate feedback on that.
Tom Corey, fifty-nine Arbor Way. Why didn't you share the survey info of the questions to parents before they were given to kids? Why no transparency? It's hard to opt-out of something we know nothing about. Also, asking twelve-year-olds, "When was the first time you had oral sex", implies that oral sex by this time is normal and almost expected. Also, options for answers being age under eight, eight to nine, ten to eleven, was even more disturbing. IMO, which I think means, in my opinion, wording and options could have been better. Thank you.
Okay, um, again, um, we, I feel like we were transparent. We put the information in the newsletter. We shared the opt-out letter. We made the letter available for people to read. We put it in the school calendar. Mr. Carroll put a reminder in the December newsletter, and it was also, um, it was also available during parent conferences for everyone to read. I, I uh, spoke many times already about the reliability and validity of giving out the survey. CDC and D E S I doesn't do that either. Um, I also talked about why we phrased the question the way we did, to try to maintain student anonymity. Uh, again, I encourage people to go and look a little earlier in this meeting if you um, came late. And the reason for under eight is because um, nationally, that's the question, and we have had that in Easton, which is why we're trying to determine if that is growing, decreasing, or staying static as a statistic. That definitely directs um, how we handle this.
Kathleen Sheehan, Harrison Avenue, would like everyone to know that both twenty-twenty-one surveys are available online, and she will send you the links. Um, Carrie Bishop, four, six, four Bay Road. Why is it not our legal right to have a copy of the survey?
So, anything that is standardized and norm-referenced um, in education, we are not obliged to give to parents. I um, was not able to answer you again, Ms. Bishop, because I, I was preparing this presentation, but uh, I was going to um, let you know that I, to make sure I'm not giving the wrong information, I sent it to Legal, and they said to let everyone know that, um, that's a public records request. It's gonna take us ten days. She's very busy as well, and she's gonna look into it so that we can get you the exact information. Um, I can't keep looking for that right now, so because of what we have going on here. Um, so she's going to do that, and we'll provide that information, but the 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 um, basic answer is that it um, invalidates all the data that we have. That is the statistical fact. I'm, I'm not making that up. Anyone that's taken statistics, anyone that has, um, done, um, quantified studies, anyone that has done data anal- analysis um, is aware that it invalidates the um, test. I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I should keep repeating that. I, I'm thinking maybe the question's there, and then the person might hear the answer, so I apologize if I am repeating too much. I just wanna make sure that if perhaps someone came in late, they're not missing what I may have said earlier.
Um, Tara Delamere, eight Winnicott Way. So to confirm, there will be police presence at the schools in response to this nationwide threat as other districts are doing? Do you think we will consider instituting a resource officer at the schools in the future? We should. We need to know. We are doing everything to keep kids safe in the schools.
Um, so to confirm, yeah, well, we've asked for it. I presume we will have an increased police presence. Um, it is not a nationwide threat. It is a person on TikTok who is putting something out there. Um, as far as a resource, I would love to have a resource officer. I've been very public about the want for one. Um, there was an attempt for an operational override to get uh, a resource officer and many other things, and the taxpayers very clearly indicated that was something they were interested in paying for. So we work at the will of the taxpayer um, and the resources that we have. So until we have the resources, we are not able to have a school resource officer. But I've worked with them in the past in different districts and very successfully. Very happy to work with them in the future. I will note that the police station is on our campus, so we are very fortunate in that regard. Um, but we just don't, the police department and the school department do not have the money for it. Um, and again, we work at the will of the taxpayer, so um, that is, I'm not a taxpayer, so that's not something um I personally vote on, but we do present it often.
Xena Delaney, fourteen Arthur Road. Is there anything preventing a parent or parents from being on the board that reviews and that reviews and approves the survey questions? Can we view the survey from two thousand nineteen?
Yes, we presented that publicly, and it is a public record, and it has been. Um, uh, I'm sorry, it wasn't presented publicly because we, uh, of the COVID shutdown, but it was presented to the school committee and became public record, so of course, yes, you can see the uh, you can see the results, but it, obviously, it's every question because it has the answer to every question, so that is the same as seeing it. It's even better because you have the data. Um, and no, there's nothing present, preventing it. I have many times in this meeting encouraged people um, to get involved when we ask for that, that, when we start working on that, which, again, this isn't gonna happen for two years, so we have time for that.
Erica Mandell, fifty Main Street. The wording on a lot of these questions was so poor and grammatically incorrect. One question was, "Have you ever had sexual contact with you against your will?" What does that even mean? I hope you mean it that in the future, you will ask the, for parental input, and I hope that can be in-person.
Uh, so again, if we want our questions to be compared to Massachusetts or national norms, we need to word them the same way, so we don't come up with our own questions. The, the very, very few questions are, are, are wording. They are from national and state questions. Uh, what that means is, has anyone forced you to have sexual contact? Um, and unfortunately, that is the case in all of our schools. We have students in every school in Easton who have had sexual contact against their will, and so that is a very relevant question for um, the middle school, unfortunately.
Okay, Kathy Sheehan, Harrison Ave. Here is the link to the two thousand twenty-one CDC survey. Um, so I've, I've clicked on that link to the school committee, and I will send that to you. Um, again, why are you not able to provide a copy of EPS's survey?
Uh, I will have to look at the link. I don't know what it is. I was told that they were not gonna publish it, so I have to look at the link. Thank you for providing it. Um, are, we cannot provide it because we, if we use the same questions next it's very, this is like a master's degree course, um, statistics and data analysis, so I don't want to water it down um, for you because I know that um, this can be a long conversation, and I can't explain it to you, um, but it, it just invalidates our data. Um, but parents can read it. I had someone in here today reading it. We have made it available to people since before it was given, and we've made it available every single time we've given it. So if you are, if you want to read it, please come and read it. We're happy to have you.
Sarah Dagel, thirty-one Clark Hill Drive. A suggestion request regarding the youth health survey. Perhaps once the data comes in, it would be helpful to host a parent workshop or presentation so that parents can understand the data regarding various health issues facing our children. Written reports of data may not be read or understood as well as more interactive presentation. These subjects are uncomfortable, but are so important for parents to understand.
Thank you. Uh, you're exactly right. Actually, every presentation we've done has had a parent workshop in the evening, and we've brought counselors and in case parents had any questions about it. Again, in two thousand nineteen, we couldn't do it because, uh, because of COVID-nineteen, so, um, but you're right, and we do do that. And so we hope that parents will attend, because of course, we will once again um, invite you to be there. We've done it in the Oliver Ames Auditorium. Uh, and we will do that again. I just need to make sure that our data can be used this year. Um, because we know a lot of parents clicked on the survey. Um, and so let me just, the, um, the data analyst is looking over the information right now, and she's gonna let us know if we can use the information, and if we can, we will do what we've always done, which is have a presentation in Oliver Ames Auditorium for parents at night. And certainly, we'll have professionals there if you have any questions or are looking for any resources at all.
Andrea Picotte, eighty-three Short Street. Do you think it may be contradictory to validate the use of the data from this type of survey on risk-taking behavior and to express that the data shows our children are engaging in said dangerous behavior? But then in, in that, but then invalidate a TikTok threat with the severity being school shooting? How can you be so confident that your, that our young, impressionable, social media-savvy children won't take it seriously and use it as an opportunity to act in violence?
Uh, I'm, I'm not dismissing it. I, I said a little bit prior that we're gonna have a police presence at the schools. Um, that is absolutely the safest thing we can do, is have police present. And they aren't the only people present. We've got professionals in and throughout every building that are very aware of um, these types of things. Again, I just wanna make it clear so that we're not um, inadvertently giving out any um, potentially misleading information. There has not been a threat to Easton specifically at all. It's a national TikTok. One, uh, somebody posted something on TikTok, which is a national medium. One, uh, somebody posted something on TikTok, which is a national medium. Easton has never been um. Named in it. I'm not saying we're not taking it seriously. I just don't want anyone to infer from what you said that there's some kind of threat. Specific to Easton.
Erica Mandell fifty Main Street. I understand what it should have said. It isn't what it said. That was my point.
You're gonna have to remind me of what I don't.
Um, Tom Corey. Fifty nine Arbor Way. Now that schools are open and public events have been happening for a while, when will the school committee start having in-person meetings again? This will allow parents and school committee members to communicate a more open dialogue.
Um, I know, I, the school committee can certainly answer if they'd like. I know that we're taking our lead from the town. Um, all the town meetings are still. Done remotely and um. I'm not sure if there's a plan to change that. Um, sure, we, I mean, we're paying attention to that and. Um, the school committee will have a decision to make once that does happen. That's that's the school committee's decision, so I I don't know if you're asking the school committee. Certainly, anybody can chime in if they would like.
I was just gonna say what you said. As of right now, all town committees and um are meeting remotely.
Holly Zachos twenty nine Scotch Dam Road Southeaston. Why not call the survey what it is? A health, sex, and substance abuse survey? Also, what is preventing the school from posting last year's questions in the newsletter instead of having parents dig for it? Does the school have any idea how many kids who did not know the those terms before the survey? Went up going and looking them up? Um, I think most people are upset their kids. Most, I think most people are upset their kids' exposure to anal sex, oral sex. And explicit substances were at school in class when we expected kids to be protected.
Okay, uh. I don't know what what the reference is to anal sex. There's nothing on any of our surveys about anal sex. There was a question about oral sex because it is um. Is was hap- it's happening in the middle school. Um, as I said prior, uh, as far as digging for it, every time we do the presentation, we invite parents, as I said before. A little bit earlier to come and hear the presentation and we put it on our website, so we're not trying to make it difficult to find. Anybody can ask for it. People want Mister Carroll to send the data from the last time, he can send it. Nobody's trying to hide anything. As I said, we've we've put all this out there. Um, I understand people are busy, but I think. At some level, there has to be a little bit of shared responsibility. And again, I encourage people to read the newsletters that are sent home, and if there's something you want, simply ask for it and we'll send it to you. Uh, I I don't think inferring that um we're trying to hide something is is helpful in any way. We put it out in as many ways as we possibly can. We never know exactly what issue parents are going to. React to. We have a lot of, a lot of things going on in every school, every day, at every level, in every subject. At every time of the year. Simply ask, we'll happy to provide it. Nobody's asking anybody to search for anything, certainly.
Kristin Dunme twenty four Armor Lane. You mentioned several times that you're not sure if you can use the data from the survey. Because parents have talked, seen it, but parents did not see the survey until after students took it.
Correct. The data analyst said she wanted to look at the data because we have to make sure that there weren't double. You know, if we had four hundred and fifty students taking it and there are. Five hundred responses, then it would mean that the data's been compromised. I don't know that that's the case. It might not be the case, but um parents have reported that they have. That they took the survey. Uh, I don't know if they submitted the survey. I, we don't have any idea because this is. This ju- this just just happened, and again, this is. One of many, 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 many things that we're working on on a daily basis, so we're trying our best. To figure out what's happening, um, but I don't have that answer yet because she hasn't responded to me yet. We'll get that to you as soon as humanly possible.
Okay, you just answered this question, um, but I'm just gonna read it, but you just answered it. It says, Xena Delaney fourteen Arthur Road. Why isn't the twenty twenty one data published by the C D C compromised upon release, but Easton's is? So I think you just answered that. Um, Holly Zachos uh twenty nine Scotch Dam Road. Why not post it then? This should be something that's completely open with parents. I make a motion to post it. And then.
I think I answered that also.
Ja- uh, Kathy Sheehan Harrison Avenue. Parents assume that this was a standard survey given by D E S I. There is a reason why D E S I does not provide the Y R B S to middle school students. They only. Offer the Y H S for middle school students. Please do not blame parents.
Certainly not blaming parents. Asking for a tiny bit of grace. We're certainly not blaming parents. The C D C is given to the middle school and that's what we're using.
Andrea Picot eighty three Short Street. Now that health ed is starting at R O, will topics of sexual activity and types of drugs be in that curriculum? Is it in the middle school health ed curriculum? Because because health may not be taken until third trimester for some seventh graders. Would you consider in the future giving the survey after they've had bad health ed class? So that they could have some baseline context for these questions?
That is a a great question. Excuse me, the test is uh in order to be compared to nation. And the nations and the states data, it needs to be done by the end of December. And so that's why we do it in December. We try to get as late in the year as we can. Uh, if we wait until, as you said, the the last trimester, which makes sense. Now that's in the, that's in the spring of the next year and it isn't considered comparable to the data we get from the other places. And, oh, there was another question there. The curriculum, uh, so we don't necessarily, because we're learning about different risk behaviors, like I said earlier about oral sex. It it doesn't mean we're teaching that in class now. It just means we're trying to make sure our teachers get appropriate professional development. If they're ever approached, so they know where to send students and how to contact parents and let them know and to advise parents on how they. Uh, can have conversations with their children or answer questions that they might have, so. Uh, it's not a direct correlation that as soon as, just because there's a question on the test, it's taught in the school. Uh, that is, that isn't how we do it, but um it it. Informs many of our decisions for professional development and parent resources and things that we purchase. These are all things that we've talked about at each of the public um presentations we've done on these in the past, and so. Uh, I, again, I would encourage people to attend those, uh, attend that. Um, when we present this information.
Dottie Fulgenetti seventy eight Elm Street. Thank you for the thoughtfulness of the experts that were involved in administering the survey. I remember my shock when my own kids took this survey, so I can understand the worry. I learned that this survey was critical for securing funding for important funding and for identifying the issues that the schools need to focus on.
Thank you.
Holly Zachos twenty nine Scotch Dam Road. I think the outpouring of concern should make the school board consider a revision for how this survey is handled.
Uh, a- as I've said, um, I'm I'm, I just wanna repeat in case Miss Zachos wasn't here. Um, I've said it many times in this meeting that we're always looking for parent feedback. On how we can communicate this um for the reasons. Uh, giving reasons for the questions that we're asking. Um, talking about ways that we uh share information with parents. We are, we always ask for perf- we always ask for input. People are busy. We understand that. I'm saying that we're gonna ask for input again and I hope people will participate. We're not trying to shut anybody out of the process. This is completely cooperative and we're always welcoming of feedback. Um, the only thing I've said in this meeting is that I respectfully request. That the feedback is in the form of looking for answers and giving input and not. Um, focused on personal attacks or conjecture.
And then Dottie Fulgenetti just wanted to say that she she meant to say. I learned that the survey was critical in securing funding for important programs. Um, it was just a typo on her part.
That is true. Very true.
And that's all we have this evening.
All right, before I move out of public comment, did the school committee have any other questions? Comments? Okay, all right, thank you. Um, Assistant Superintendent Notes.
I just wanna alert everyone that notification will come out for a community event for January eleventh. Um, Debbie Irving, the author of Waking Up White, will be presenting a virtual presentation. For our staff and community members um on on her her book. Um, it's going to be a wonderful, wonderful event, and I just wanted to say, save the date for everyone. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. All right, that is the end of our agenda. Just to go back. For anyone who came in late, we changed at our. Um, January sixth meetings to January thirteenth, so our next school committee meeting will be January thirteenth. Two thousand twenty-two, weird as that is to say, at five o'clock. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Star so moved.
O'Neill second.
Roll call out.
O'Neill, yes.
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wesman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, good night.